May I please rise and request allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, two republics which expand, one nation, under God, indivisible, every justice and law.
Okay, Audrey Yoder will lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord. Thank you for our fair and for all the people who work so hard to put in. Please bless it with your mercy and grace throughout our home. And today bless this meeting and help all decisions be made with wisdom, anger, and grace. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, our next workshop will be Tuesday, July 16th at 10:30 a.m. back at the Commissioners' Hearing Room on High Street. And our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, July 17th, also at 10:30 in the same meeting room. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Here, and I don't have a mic, so I'm gonna try to announce it as best I can. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Ms. Frenchtoe?
Here.
Senator Loy?
Here, tomorrow you can take the one off the podium. Just hold it. Okay, we're gonna start off with a presentation by the Board of Commissioners to the members of the Trumbull County 4-H program. And this is a resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners in recognition of the 2024 Trumbull County 4-H youth members and adult volunteers. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners takes great pride in recognizing the hard work and dedication of the 590 outstanding 4-H youth members of Trumbull County, Ohio. And whereas, the 4-H program provides a positive environment where youth from Trumbull County, Ohio, can share the subject matter and skills they have learned from their projects and demonstrate them during fair week. Thousands of people from the Mahoning Valley visit the fair to see these exhibits. And whereas, 4-H would not be possible without the 98 trained adult volunteers who spend countless hours mentoring, educating, listening, and guiding these fine young adults. These volunteers teach their individual 4-H members how to run their own meetings, elect officers, vote on all issues pertaining to their club, organize fundraisers, and how to balance the club's checking account. And whereas, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners commands our 4-H participants for their time and dedication towards these projects and their participation in 25 traditional clubs. This year's national 4-H slogan is "Opportunity for All." And whereas, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners also wishes to say a special thank you to all the staff and volunteers who works diligently giving guidance and support to these youths. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners urges all citizens of Trumbull County to support the efforts of these young people who are the future of Trumbull County. Our children are one of our greatest assets and should be commended for the success they accomplish through the 4-H program. If we can have the instructors and the kids come on up to the front of the stage for the photo op.
We already did the motion last weekend. We've been tight guys. I need to be in all of the picture. I'll tell you what, we impacted. You too go out and do your duty. Everybody looking at camera in the middle? Got some big end for 4-H.
Good morning, Trumbull County Commissioners, staff, and attendees. My name is Ashley Meredith and I'm a 4-H educator in Trumbull County. We appreciate the opportunity to share with you this morning a glimpse of the impact Trumbull County 4-H has had on our youth. "Opportunity for All" has been our promotional theme in 2024. Being a 4-H alum myself, I can attest to the hands-on learning experiences I had as a youth member, as well as the countless opportunities to become a better leader, role model, and citizen. With confidence, I can say that 4-H helped establish a sturdy foundation of important core values in my life and helped make connections with adults who would encourage me to do my best, create lifelong friendships and mentorships. Approaching eight years in the administrative role, it has been a joy to watch 4-H members mature and take on leadership or mentoring roles with younger members. The growth I have seen amongst our youth is both inspiring and rewarding. Trumbull County 4-H is a multifaceted program and supports over 25 traditional 4-H clubs, three school enrichment programs, including Real Money Real World, Ag 101, and Check Quest, resident camping programs, STEM Day camps, and special interest groups involving teen traffic safety. Each year, we look to expand our outreach throughout the county. I encourage you to look on the first inside page of the pamphlet to learn more about Ohio 4-H and Trumbull 4-H numbers and the project distribution in our county. 4-H's success lies in the hands of dedicated volunteers and program partnerships. We are thankful for the talented group of adults, the support of our Commissioners, and other organizations that keep pushing us forward. By supporting the 4-H way, you are allowing 4-H members ages five to 18 the opportunity to learn more about lending a hand in their communities, strengthening networking capabilities, developing leadership skills, increasing responsibility, teaching good sportsmanship, and much, much more. I have 10 4-H members with me today who are very passionate about 4-H, and this is only a small glimpse of our total numbers. I hope that they, that you may be able to see the impact 4-H has made in their lives and how 4-H has inspired them. So at this time, I would like to have the 4-H members come, stand in front of the stage, and I'm gonna have them introduce themselves with their name, age, and club.
Chelsea, if you wanna start.
My name's Chelsea, I'm 17, and I'm in Silver Claws. Rachel Katz.
My name's Alison Beers, I'm 11.
My name's Riley, I'm 13, and I'm in Wild Silver Claws.
My name's Turner Reller, I'm 13, I'm in Happy Hands.
My name's Wyatt Stevenson, I'm 12.
Ella, I'm 19, and I'm in.
I'm Chelsea, I'm 15, and I'm in.
Thank you, if they can be seated. I'd like to invite Ella Mae Parker up to the stage to express our thanks on behalf of the 4-H program.
Thank you for all of the support we have here, and so many opportunities possible for the 4-H youth that are participating.
Thank you, Ella, I'd like to invite Chelsea Gaines to come up. As we, as she leaves us in the 4-H pledge, if everyone could stand, please. If you do not know the 4-H pledge, inside of your program are yours.
I pledge my head to clear the pavement, my heart to greater culture, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
We would now like to present a small gift of thanks to our Commissioners and staff in appreciation. At this time, some of our 4-H members would like to share a short speech with you this morning. And so I'd like to first call up Mr. Ronald Inhofe.
Hi, my name is Ronald Inhofe. I'm out of Happy Hands of Trumbull County Beef Roasters. I've been in 4-H for 10 years now. Today, I wanted to share how important 4-H is to. Being a part of this incredible organization has been a life-changing experience. Before H, I had the opportunity to show beef steers and market hogs, and this journey has taught me so much. Reasonably showing these animals installed in me is strong work ethic, patience, and responsibility. Every early morning feeding, and every late night check, every moment spent caring for my animals has been a lesson and dedication to commitment. These experiences have not only shaped me as a person, but have also given me a deep appreciation for agriculture and the effort it takes to bring food from the farm to our tables. 4-H is more than just showing animals, it's a community where I've been, where I made lifelong friends and mentors who have supported me and guided me. The lessons I've gained and the connections I've made will stay with me forever, influencing my teacher endeavors. Thank you for supporting 4-H and recognizing the value it brings to young people like me. Your support helps us grow into responsible people, have passion, and ambitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronald, I'd now like to invite Riley Lynch.
Good morning, my name is Riley Lynch, I'm 13 years old, and I would like to share about how 4-H has helped me with boosting my confidence. 4-H has helped me with a lot of things, and confidence is one of them. Fun fact, building your confidence requires you to do scary things, and 4-H has given me the chance to do lots of scary things. My first scary experience was Camp Whitewood. Now, Camp Whitewood itself is not scary, it is actually quite awesome, but Camp Whitewood was the first time I slept away from my parents. Sure, I had a couple of rough nights, but I slept away from home for a week, and that's a long time for your first sleepover. Camp Whitewood also taught me teamwork, how to fun, how to have fun on stormy estates. I had the first year, and the first time I went on stage to do a skit. Rabbit showmanship is another scary thing I did too, I started two years ago for 4-H. It was pretty fun, I loved meeting the judges and participants. My rabbit, Indiana Jones, is in the rabbit barn, so stop by if you want. In order for your rabbit to be calm, you have to be calm, and that's kinda hard when you think of all the what-ifs that have happened during your term. Thankfully, the judges are very patient and nice people and will wait if you're having trouble flipping your rabbit. Lastly, 4-H has helped me with my giant fear of public speaking. Standing in front of you all right now is terrifying, but it's boosting my confidence, so thank you for being here today. First time I was supposed to speak in front of my 4-H club was for my leopard gecko project. My club, the Wild Silver Claws, had this thing where kids could choose what month they do a speech. My mom signed me up, I chickened out, but that's alright. So when Ashley asked me to speak today, my mom and dad really wanted me to try, so here I am. And I know why they did, public speaking is a life skill and can help you in many ways. These are just a couple examples, I could go on, but I won't. So thank you mom and dad for encouraging me not to chicken out this time, thank you Ashley for inviting me to this, and thank you for 4-H for giving me so many ways to keep growing my confidence.
Thank you, Riley, I'd like to call up next on Hunter Miller.
Good morning, my name is Hunter Miller, I'm 13, and will be in eighth grade at Joseph Badger School this fall. I live in the state of township, I live in my family farm called W-I-N, W-I Miller and Sons. I've been in 4-H since I was nine years old and showed pigs since you were at the fair. My brothers and I have also showed pigs at state fair each year. My favorite thing about 4-H is meeting new people and hanging out at the fair. My family has six pigs and three steers at the fair this year. We'll be selling all of them on this livestock sale on Saturday. We look, we take the money that we earn at the sale and set aside a portion to buy new animals for next year. The money is left, the money that is left, we put in an account to save for college, to help our parents pay for feed, and the supplies for next year. We spend lots of time working our animals to local businesses, people, and hope they support us. Being able to talk about our projects in agriculture is one of the most valuable things, valuable lessons 4-H has taught me. If you are thinking about joining 4-H, you should just do it. Please stop in the barns to see myself and the other 4-Hers have been working hard at all year. Don't forget to check out the livestock sale on Saturday, enjoy the fair.
Thank you, Hunter. Next, we have Raylan Ray, she is also our 2024 4-H princess.
Good morning, my name is Raylan Ray, I'm nine years old and a student at Roosevelt Elementary, heading into the fifth grade. I'm a member of the Trumbull County Equalizer's, Feathered Friends, and Shooting Sports Pioneers. This is my second year as an active 4-H member, and I also participated one year as a clover bud. I am honored to be a participant of this year's proclamation day and to have the opportunity to speak in front of you all today. My 4-H journey started three years ago when I became a clover bud in Trumbull County Equalizer's 4-H club. I first joined because I love horses and I was looking for an activity outside of school that I enjoyed. Over the past three years, I have made different friends and found a group of people who share the same interests as me. They are always there to push me to try new things and to cheer me on. 4-H has given me a place to learn about many things, face and work through challenges, develop my leadership skills, and has given me ideas about what I would like to do when I get older. Thanks to my time in different clubs and different projects and taking, and talking to 4-H members, I now have the goal to attend TCTC and their Vet Tech Program and to work in the veterinarian field when I get older. I want to thank you for your continued support of 4-H. Your dedication to the program has given kids like me a place to fit in. The memories I have made during the club meetings and activities, shows in the weeks spent here at fair will be those that I will never forget. Last year, I was a club's treasurer and I won the Walk Trot Division High Point Award. This year, I've become the vice president of TCE. I've taken on the role of recreation officer for Feathered Friends. I was chosen as the Walk Trot Horse Person of the Year and chosen as the 2024 4-H Princess. I will also be traveling to the Ohio State Fair as a Trumbull County representative with my mini pony, Crinkle. I am also looking forward to the livestock sale of my market chickens. This is my first market project, and I was chosen for the Deerfield Ave Scholarship to fund my project. All of this is thanks to each of you, thank you.
Thank you, Raylan. And last but certainly not least, Wyatt Steepleton.
Hi, my name is Wyatt Steepleton, I work for the Trumbull County Beef Roasters. I joined the 4-H program when I was nine, and I have been showing cows for four years. My family and I own a farm in Hubbard, Ohio. There's cows, goats, horses, and chickens. We also do pigs and turkey seasonings. I like 4-H because it has taught me many life skills. I have learned how to properly care for animals, have learned more about agriculture, and have learned how to balance a checkbook. I opened a checking and savings account at college with the money I made in my first year's project. I hope I feed, pay vet bills, and provide my next project needs out of this money. I have made a lot of friends and met a lot of new people, and have also learned how to communicate better with people. We appreciate all of Trumbull County Commissioners for supporting the 4-H program so that kids like me can learn and continue to learn during these life steps.
Thank you, Wyatt. In conclusion, thank you Commissioner Malloy, Commissioner Frenchtoe, Commissioner Councilor Mesa, and staff for your continued support of our program. We will continue to encompass the 4-H motto to make the best better in Trumbull County. Thank you again for having us.
Okay, as we get onto our agenda. You guys all did great. Riley, you rocked it. Rayland, represent us well in Columbus, you're fantastic, you're gonna be sitting up here someday. And the rest of you guys, fantastic job, I'm really, really proud of you.
If you're, if you're recording, and I'm live, I want to remind everyone about the livestock sale too. This is how to get people to go, you can go and get.
Speak, speak a little bit closer to the microphone, they can't hear you.
Buy your cat food and come Saturday, and they'll help you if you've never bought. I'll be there too, if anyone wants to come for the first time. It's, it's really good to support the kids in their projects. And I'm hoping that people who've never bought will use a note that the animals are real as well, that it's supporting local agriculture, and that's absolutely something that we need to make maybe here in some of our counties.
Do you wanna buy Rayland's chickens? Okay, yes, Madam Clerk, item number one.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated July 3rd, 2024, and accept and approve the video recording of the meeting of the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve, second the motion.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Yes.
Senator Loy.
Yes.
Frenchtoe. Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Yes.
Senator Loy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchtoe.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
Make a motion to approve, second the motion.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Yes.
Senator Loy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchtoe.
Yes. No.
Item number four is to approve decrease of appropriations.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Yes.
Senator Loy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchtoe.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve, second the motion.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Yes.
Senator Loy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchtoe. Item number six is to receive and place on file the May 2024 monthly operating report for Trumbull County Transit and the Western Reserve Transit Authority.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Um, did you receive this? I checked in my email and received it, but.
Yes.
There was a, it's sending me, no, I didn't receive the. First under, uh, WRTA, under report.
Yeah, you need to talk into the microphone, so I sure.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Yes.
Senator Loy.
Yes.
Frenchtoe. Item number seven is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Transit Standard 2024 Certification and Assurance for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. The Ohio Department of Transportation will not award any federal or state assistance until the applicant provides the proper signatures via the Standard 2024 Certification and Assurance Document. The assistance that will be applied for is to receive funding to help run transportation service.
Motion to approve, second the motion.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Yes.
Senator Loy.
Yes.
Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to authorize the Board of Commissioners clerk to advertise for the 2024 Request for Proposals for the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Comprehensive Case Management Program Youth Services. This action would allow interested providers to competitively procure these services in conjunction with WI O A slash C C M E P to be operated by the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services slash Ohio Means Jobs Center.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to receive the request from Attorney Thomas C. Mader, agent for the petitioner Maes and Blue Holding L T D, to withdraw the petition for annexation of land known as being lot numbers 25, 26, 65, and 66 in the Crystal Springs Park Allotment, which Platte recorded in Volume 12, Page 64 and 65 of the Platte Records of Trumbull County, Ohio, and referenced as P P Ns 28-4868747576 located in Howland Township to the city of Warren, Ohio. The original petition was received on by the Commissioners on the Commissioners' Agenda on April 17th, 2024, and the amended petition was received on May 22nd, 2024.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant for right-of-way permits requested by the companies in township listed in those companies in township Dominion East, Ohio, Valona Township, and Northeast Ohio Dukes.
Motion to approve. Now, second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 11 is to adopt an improvement resolution determining to proceed with the construction of the Zeta and Mecca Wastewater Treatment Plant's Nutrient Reduction Improvements known as County Project Number 8-S-20 in the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metro Subdistrict, and to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for construction of said project.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to enter into a non-reimbursable extension agreement for the extension of a sanitary sewer in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code Section 307.73 with Jerry Alta Bally, Managing Member of Home and Land Developers LLC on Potter Circle in Liberty Township, Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Subdistrict, known as Project Number 2-S-23, subject to the approval of the Prosecutor's Office.
Make a motion to approve. Second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Before. Before we come on to our agenda, which goes to have approved approval by the Prosecutor's Office according to our policies, and it wasn't included, so I I will abstain because it didn't come along with the approval pursuant to our policies.
Item number 13 is to enter into a non-reimbursable extension agreement for the extension of a water line in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code Section 307.473 with Jerry Alta Bally, Managing Member of Home and Land Developers LLC on Potter Circle in Liberty Township Southeast Public Water System known as Project Number 1-W-23, subject to the approval of the Prosecutor's Office.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Again, because this wasn't already approved and you couldn't be voting on things unless a prosecutor's office has already approved them, and our policy states that I'm going to abstain. Item number 14 is to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. William Hoover from the position of Sewer Line Maintenance Assistant, pay range 6, 1752 per hour, to the position of TV Inspector slash Routing Assistant Technician, pay range 6, 1752 per hour, with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective Thursday, July 11th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 15 is to adopt a resolution congratulating Ms. Callie Richards for all of her high school athletic and academic successes. Ms. Richards graduates from Maple High School as the 2024 Class Valedictorian with a 4.0 GPA as class president, student council president, and band vice president, along with many volunteering opportunities. She has excelled in the running world with many records and has decided to continue running as a Youngstown State University Penguin. Ms. Richards is a six-time O H S A A state champion with two state titles in cross-country and four state titles in track, and has been on the state podium four other times at award ceremonies for her race finishes. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins others in congratulating Ms. Callie Richards for her outstanding accomplishments, both academically and athletically.
Make a motion to approve. And is Callie here today? Okay. Now, second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
It is a great pleasure that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins the residents of Trumbull County and congratulating Callie Richards for all of her high school athletic and academic success. Callie graduates from Maplewood High School as the 2024 Class Valedictorian with a 4.0 grade point average, as class president, student council president, and band vice president, along with many volunteering opportunities. And whereas Callie has excelled in the running world with many records and has decided to continue running as a Youngstown State University Penguin, Callie is one of the most dominant runners in the history of the Valley and the Ohio's and the state of Ohio. Callie is a six-time O H S A A state champion with two state titles in cross-country and four state titles in track, plus has been on the state podium four times at award ceremonies for her race finishes. Callie holds 12 regional titles and 18 district titles. And 18 district titles, when including track relays in that count. Her first high school championship win was her freshman year, winning the local Oscar Grant Invitational at the start of September 2020. She continued gaining championships thereafter at cross-country invitationals around the state that include hundreds of athletics athletes, including the Boardman Invitational, Tiffin Invitational, Trumbull County Legends Cross Country Two Mile Race, and in high school, records in cross-country 3.1 miles in 17 minutes and 50 seconds, the track 1600 and 4.4 minutes and 55 seconds, the 3200 and 10 minutes and 39 seconds, plus the relay for plus a relay. Locally, Callie has been league and county MVP for all four years and holds the county record in the 1600 meter and the 3200 meter, and whereas Callie is very supportive family, and most importantly, her appreciation by giving thanks to God, she who she includes in prayer for peace, strength, and endurance, also deserves credit for her success. As inspiration, always more is a yell that could be heard from her family when racing to the finish line. The family knows that God wants to give us more, that we as humans have more in us to give. Her parents, siblings, and Maplewood running community are her biggest supporters, and she would love to know that her many accomplishments will help encourage other young ladies to get involved in sports as well. Callie lives with her parents, Michael and Carrie, her older brother Caleb, and her younger sister Melody, who is just beginning her running career at Maplewood Junior High. Callie is hardworking, smart, and competitive, but she is also kind, honest, and very humble. She would never brag about herself or draw attention to herself, but instead, she would rather give thanks to God, who she feels has helped her accomplish her goals and dreams, and therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners honors Callie Richards for outstanding accomplishments in the cross-country running in track, and wishes for the best of luck, success, and happiness as she continues to accomplish her lifetime goals and endeavors. Signed from the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, Danny Malloy, Maro Cantala Mesa, and Nikki Frenchco.
I just want to thank the Commissioners for having me. I really appreciate that and all the support. Like I said, my family has given me so much without them. I wouldn't have been able to accomplish all that I have, and these past four years have just been. I don't know, like I never would have dreamed I'd accomplished all this, so I'm truly grateful. And I give God all the glory for it, so thank you again.
Okay, that concludes our regularly scheduled business for today. If anybody from the board or anyone from the crowd has has anything to say for the good of Trumbull County, they can come on up, approach the mic. Commissioner Cantala Mesa will put his mic up on the podium, and we need to announce who you are and where you're from, so we can capture for the record, please.
Commissioner, first of all, I know we have Gerard Fire here today. A lot of times, we do a lot of good things with Arpa money, and we have done a lot of good things, but Gerard Fire is here with a brand-new, brand-spanking-new ambulance right there behind us that we were able to purchase for them. Is the chief here? Chief left, okay. Captain, did you want to say a few words here?
Captain Bryan, I'm a special of Gerard Fire Department. And you are behind you is a brand-new ambulance bought by the Commissioners and the A R C front. What this allows us to do is better serve our residents of the city of Gerard. They've been paramedic first responders for almost 20 years now. Gradually getting more and more involved in the U S program, where we were 20 years ago. With this ambulance, we can transport our residents to a hospital and serve them better with more compassion. Better service. Our city administration has been very supportive, our city council has been very supportive, but we are truly grateful for your guys' support and for purchasing this out.
And speaking of Arpa money, you'll notice some big improvements here at the fairgrounds this year from the new roofs on some of the buildings. Through the improvements to the electricity and the bowls, we got brand-new restrooms, handicap-accessible restrooms over at the.
Commercial building.
Commercial building.
Yes. And they're doing some improvements at the grandstand, and you're gonna see lots and lots more. We started last year. Working with the county engineer and others on the parking lots and trying to keep people from parking in the mud, and that worked out great last year. And now, we've appropriated over half a million dollars of Arpa money. We just got another half a million dollars from a Senate bill that's gonna be used to upgrade the grandstand electricity throughout the facility. So, as I said yesterday, we had the ribbon cutting. That's just the tip of the iceberg. We look forward to many, many more improvements in the upcoming years and making this fairgrounds be all that it can be. I want to commend the fair board, and if there are fair board members out there, can you all please stand up? Where's my fair board members? We got, I know we got Barry, our president, up front. Let's give the fair board a round of applause. Young ones back there involved first. I mean, we got a fantastic fairboard. People have been working like Santa's elves for months, and I also like to commend our maintenance department head, Bill Hart, back there with his crew. He's done a lot, as well as finding and restoring the society. And has volunteered a lot of time. Also, we have a new display under the grandstand for our dog pound. Michelle Goss is here from our county dog pound, and we have some dogs to adopt on here while you're out and about. And we encourage you to go into the grandstand and see our county display, where many of our departments came together to display the service we provide for all the citizens of Trumbull County through your tax dollars. So, thank you again for everything that you've done out here at the fair, fair board. We're proud to work with you and look forward to working with you in the future. Okay, Barry, would you like to speak?
Thank you for coming to our 178th fair. I'm the president, Barry Brown. I tell you the thank yous, I never stop. Our fair board, I'm telling you, you look around, you can find a weed, you can find something out of place. It'll be hard to leave. Everybody, buckle down. I just want special thanks. When you talk about the Commissioners team, there's a lot of people in here. They're down there, and when you go down, if you're from the fair, they're all smiling. They all want to help. They got one awesome team. The maintenance department, and like he mentioned, Bill Hart, he told me not to bring his name up, but we couldn't live without him, and I think we're gonna work on canceling his retirement next year. And as far as the EMS, the Zeta Police, the Sheriff's Department, I mean, across the board. You can't mention names because there's too many. I just hope everybody enjoys the fair. It's gonna be a wonderful week of weather, and these 4-H kids, that's why we do it. That don't warm your heart, you're in trouble place. And as you can see, the fans came in today. I'll get a little emotional. 137 of them were buying their lunch, their drinks in front of the fair, hating from Madison, who wants. I think that's three, three, four, three.
Commissioner, real quick before anybody says anything, I also can be remiss if we get this also mentioned. This chair was so near and dear to Bud Rogers' heart. He was a fair board member for a long time here, as long as I was here. And for those fair board members, they are no longer with Bud Rogers, Tom Sawyer. All of them would be so proud of the accomplishments that we've made here in the last few years, so. Just thinking about that with a happy heart.
Martha, you're the Trumbull County auditor. I have a little Arpa business that I need to take care of, just to get some things moving along. We're working on the agreement for Vermin's Road Project between the Commissioners and the engineer. And with that, there were some questions that Attorney Rogers raised that I need to have answered in order to completely agree. I want to try to get it on the agenda next week. First of all, she she asked about the cap on the funds. We have frozen $408,069 as the amount. I wanted to just verify with you guys that that's, or the board, that that's what we wanted to do.
I agree.
Yes.
And then second, we need a point of contact for the commissioners. And in speaking with Attorney Rogers, this could be myself or Shara, whoever you guys want, um, and it's up to the board's pleasure.
I I'd like to have Martha continue to plow exactly.
Well, and it's for this particular project.
I think it's in spring lines with you there.
All right, I will let her in. I have one other thing. That just wanted a comment that I'd like to make. Um, we as public officials, uh, we get to set things in motion, but often the people who deliver are our employees. And I think it's really important to recognize those employees uh when they do a good job and when they go over and above. Last year, and actually for many years, the cellular service at this fair has been really bad. Um, Commissioner Malloy asked um my employee, I T director and my deputy auditor, Senator Hannaford, to see what he could do. Uh, I think at least from today, from yesterday and today, uh, we know that he delivered. He worked with the cellular companies so that we would have good cell service. He went above and beyond. Um, I knew when I came into office that I had a good guy there, and I appreciate him a lot. I am proud and blessed to have him as my employee, the deputy auditor, and the county is blessed to have him.
Thank you, Martha. And if everybody looks, looks back here to the south, you can see the three towers back there that we have. We have a Verizon Tower, an A T and T Tower, and a T-Mobile Tower now, so we should be able to provide service for everybody here at the fair this year. Last year, that was a big problem. And with that, a lot of people have internet through their phone or through the cellular provider. Uh, but a big shout out to all three of those companies for stepping up to help us. And we are working now, this is a test also with these companies, to try to uh potentially get permanent service out here at the fairgrounds, which will help not only the fairgoers with the people that utilize the fair year round and the neighbors and the neighboring communities. Because when we came to town every year, the neighbors lost all their cell service. So this is something where we can help the community too, and Bill Hart is kind of spearheading that with us now about possibly getting a tower on the property here and us running the service to these providers and making the county some money in the process. So thank you, Bill, for coming, bringing that to our attention. Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County they'd like to speak about?
Commissioner, if I could, um, you know, this, we've been working on a new dog town for like some time. But anybody that's been out there knows the conditions that are out there. Bill and myself have tried to spearhead this uh new development that we're trying with the with the new dog town. We're in the architectural phases of this. And today is a very important and celebratory day where we're going to see, at least the commissioners will see the the first renderings, the first conceptual drawings, and these are, you know, these can be changed, these can be modified, but uh, for everyone to see, if I could just.
We talked about Bill Hart and all the work he's put in, but.
Martha.
Yep.
You can grab this microphone here, it's not connected.
We talked about Bill Hart and all the work he's put in. He has really, I wish I could clone him. He's just an amazing individual. Uh, he's not allowed to retire. I don't care what he says.
And in in this new facility, this is our first uh conceptual drawing of the facility that's going to go right near the M O welfare lead. Um, this is going to have over thirty kennels and adoption room. It's just going to be a dignified flagship facility for years to come for the dogs. They deserve it. Um, we're proud as a board to be able to do it. I know that we have worked tirelessly together on this. All three of us are in agreement that the dog pound, we need a new facility. And this is going to be it. For anybody that wants to come up and take a look at it, it's going to be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you to all our generous donors also that are helping donate to the dog pound. And when they buy your dog licenses, there's another donation button there that they can click. Uh, and dog sale, license sales have been up from what Martha has told us, so we appreciate the community coming forth. And one other thing I want to bring up too is we do have four levies coming up on the ballot this November to help our different agencies. We got Children's Services Board. Um, we have one for drug and alcohol, uh, dependency rehabilitation. We have one for uh developmental disabilities, and we have the one for seniors services, which is a replacement this year. And uh, we're, we encourage everybody to please support our seniors, our less fortunate uh, and spread that through the community, and that's what we do. We we pay our taxes, but we take care of other people at the same, at the same time that need a little assistance and need help. So we encourage people to please get behind all those levies this fall.
So much. I would want to explain the difference between the renewals and the replacements. The renewals are the same amounts and the replacements are more after our taxes were just raised.
Some people's taxes will go up, some will go down. The average person is going to pay ten dollars a year more with a replacement based on a hundred thousand dollar house. That's, that's not even a about a Happy Meal, so um for our seniors, it's, I believe that's worth it, and the majority of the board put it through last week because of that, because this is our seniors we're talking about, and we don't want to shortchange stuff.
And any commissioners.
Had, had there been uh an effort to join W R T A, the, that would have been the trade, the, the need for an increase in the cost for the property taxes for the senior levy, because the largest expense associated with senior levies is transportation for the senior children. So if that were, if you were to join there, it would have been uh would have been shift, the need would have been shifted, or the services of that need would have been shifted to the W R T A uh, not requiring a, a, a property tax, so.
Citizens are paying a million dollars more this way. Had we joined W R T, we'd be paying seven million dollars more for our citizens. So it, it would have been seven times uh what you were paying through the user base.
It would have been up to the voters in Trumbull County, the voters to decide on that, and it was a sales tax. Sales are different than property tax. Sales, I think, that if you're a homeowner or you're your own properties, you uh realize the, the pain associated with property tax. You can more control sales taxes because, you know, just for example, medical things and who, that's not, that's not fact. We, an average person um would only be, would be experiencing a nominal increase. It just depends on how you buy it. If you can pull that, you can't control the property that way, so everyone else.
And the average farmer would be paying considerably more when he goes to buy a tractor or a truck or something, piece of equipment for the farm on a sales tax. And we don't need that for farmers.
Both of those things are up for the people to decide, so.
Because you wouldn't allow the people to decide to live on the.
Well, this is up to the people to decide, right? You could have attended one of those last two meetings and voiced your opinion then, but you chose to be M I A.
But I've been expressing my defense for this, and, but okay, I mean, I think of it should I have. I actually made a motion that died for a lack of a second, or it was voted no to put a moratorium on any more property tax increases, only replace, only the renewals, no more replacements. And you voted no because this was your intention, so.
This isn't an increase, it's up to the people to decide.
Right. And it's not additional, it's a replacement. There's a difference there also.
And every single penny of that, none of it goes to administrative services.
Some people will pay less actually with this replacement. A lot of people will pay less. Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Okay, thank you again. Have fun. We'll see you at the, at the four H sale on Saturday morning, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Poe.
And please, everyone come up. If you're interested in the dog town, the new dog town, take a look at it. It looks amazing. Please look at it.